I want to call this meeting to order. This is a regular city council meeting for the city of Hobbit Island. It's January, January, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Okay, council member Gumas, here. Council member Elwood.
Here.
Council member Graves.
Here.
Council member Coon.
Here.
Council member Mills.
Here.
Council member Bingham.
Here.
Mayor Pease.
Here.
Everyone present, Mr. Mayor.
All right, declare a quorum. On the agenda, I believe I failed to list the workshop minutes from July tenth. So we actually have minutes of two meetings and the workshop. Other than that, everything should be okay on the agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Ken made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are, the agenda is approved. Now we have minutes from the July sixth special meeting.
Aye.
Twenty-eighth regular meeting and the July tenth workshop. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh. Where was the one where the guy in green forest? That's up there, isn't it? Came over and wanted us to.
Uh, hello.
And the minutes, that was, let's send one of those.
Yeah, but you let him have his say and I would like my rebuttal put into the remarks.
Okay. Would you send me what you would like to have included?
No, I'll send what I said, but I won't send what I want to say.
I know you said that you were in favor.
Yeah.
Hello.
We can add that.
What was the, what was the issue? It's about the wind things. It really doesn't have anything to do with that.
That was the June twentieth.
Okay. We can add that. Right, with the addition of Jerry's comments on the wind farm. Uh, are there any other discussion on the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So.
Barb, may I motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn seconded it. Any further discussion? Home favor say aye.
Uh, hello.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved as amended.
Uh.
Any ceremonial recognitions, proclamations or?
Hello.
Uh, I'm not aware of any, so moving on. Uh, Wes, financial statements. Okay. Okay. Bring your hopes up. Let's go to the balance sheet first. There. Okay. At the end of June, we had a total of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in the bank. That two hundred and eighty thousand was general fund, seventy-five thousand in the reserve, and three hundred and three thousand in the street fund. Okay. Um, as far as the general fund revenue and expenditures, uh, we had total revenue of twenty-three thousand for the month, bringing us to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the year, uh, compared to about three hundred and two thousand in our budget. Uh, now when you look, uh, say county sales tax, we've received a hundred and twenty thousand so far this year, which is forty-six percent of the budget, so we're not at fifty percent. Um, and I look back and otherwise we are ahead of last year. And, uh, last year at this point, I think we were about forty-eight percent of the annual budget. So, uh, so we're a little bit behind there. Um, otherwise, so as a result of that, like I said, we're not quite, a half of the budget would be a hundred and forty-eight. So we're ten thousand dollars behind there. If you go on down through expenses, um, I don't think there's anything too unusual there. If you go to the total expenses, you can see we have five thousand, two ninety-six for the month, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred for the year-to-date for half the year, and our budget is ninety-five thousand. So, so we're about nine thousand dollars less than half of the budget on expenses. Um. Uh, building and construction, uh, three hundred and twenty-five dollars in fees, permits for the month. Making total fifty-nine hundred for the year. We're just, uh, that's about forty-seven and a half percent of our budget on, uh, building permits. The expenses, uh, year-to-date, uh, ninety-six hundred, and our budget is twenty-eight thousand. So, uh, we're well under half of the year's budget on, uh, building and construction expenses. Uh, code enforcement, uh, you can see, you can go on down a little bit to our expenses. Uh, total expenses year-to-date, thirty-eight hundred, and we had a budget of thirty-three thousand. So, uh, we have not had many expenses for code enforcement. District court, uh, very minimal expenses there, eighty-two dollars, and our budget is thirteen thousand. Um.
How many expenses for district court? Pardon? Is district court operating? We sent cases to district court?
I had a meeting with, uh, with, uh, Clint Shield, our prosecuting attorney. We had a lunch meeting over in Mount Berryville, uh, myself and Aaron and Clint.
That will soon, there will soon be expenses. Okay? Okay. Um, the planning commission, uh, we did have a hundred dollars for a permit this month. Lynn, I think I put that in for a planning commission rather than building and construction.
I think that's appropriate. It was for a conditional use permit.
That's what I figured.
Yep.
Okay. And our expenses there year-to-date are twelve hundred dollars. Uh, budget is four thousand, so we're under budget on, uh, planning commission. And if you go on down, okay, public safety, we've only spent twenty-five hundred dollars so far this year, and we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand budgeted. So we have not yet received any bills from the county for our, uh, fee for the sheriff.
Have you called them and asked for a button?
No, I have not.
We need to check.
I can do that. I didn't get that done. Okay.
Even if we did get a bill for the, uh, for, um, just bill those hours to date, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a huge bill, but, you know, by rights, they, by contract, they could have been billing us since May first. So I'd rather make that known, and if they're not billing us on purpose, then that's fine. But if they're, if it's an oversight, I would rather correct it now than at the end of the year.
You gotta cut up, and plus, if they acquire and equip a car, we'll be getting bills for that, so. Um, solid waste, I had a hundred and fifty dollars worth of bag tanks sold in June, making a total of five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And our expenses there for the dumpster primarily were a thousand twenty-two, and some legal fees of seventy-six, and something up year-to-date, a hundred and forty-one. So we've had twelve hundred dollars expense there, and we had budgeted sixteen hundred dollars of expense. So, um, we're over budgeted on that, but that's a small amount, so. Okay. So then we'll go to the general fund reserve. There's seventy-five thousand there, no activity for the month. Uh, street fund, let's see, street fund.
See the street fund.
I think that's.
Is it after?
The payment is next. Street fund at the end.
Okay.
There we go.
There it is. Um, okay, our revenue for June was twenty thousand, three sixty-three, and making a total of a hundred and thirty-six, almost a hundred and thirty-seven for the year so far year-to-date. And our budget is two eighty-six, so half of the year's budget revenue would be one forty-three. So we're a little under half there, but, uh, I figure that our county property taxes will have more coming in later in the year, probably September, October, November. So I would think we would catch up there.
We got a check in the mail today, and it was either thirty-four, thirty-eight.
It was thirty-six, I think. Yeah. So we're, you know, still not a large amount of property taxes being collected. And our only expense so far this year is three thirty-two, so we've got the three hundred and three thousand dollars left in the street fund. Any questions?
I think that we accept the treasurer's report.
Lynn moved to accept the treasurer's report. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Oh. Ken seconded it. Any discussion? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Financial statements are accepted. Um, reports, I distributed the, uh, the deputy report. You notice that the format is different, uh, and Jeff and I talked about that. And I told him that this format was just fine with me anyway. If anybody else has an issue with it, we can discuss it. But this format is already in their computer, and it takes them about two minutes to generate this report. To get the report and the format that the district was getting for years, it takes them about two hours to take this report.
Don't be, you can go.
Combined numbers and everything else into a.
I don't mind you still meeting me now.
Well, that much rather have him be out patrolling that two hours than.
Okay, you wanna go, Dan?
The only suggestion would be maybe add a date to it.
So that's a good, a good point.
For the month of, or whatever, whatever dated covers.
Yes.
I think they probably had that title too, except for, um, legislature form.
Is that for a week? Is that for a week or?
This is a month.
Or Sunday, Sunday through Saturday, yeah.
No, this is weekly, it looks like weekly to me.
Look like a week.
But it might be a month some, though. I doubt that they had all these calls on one day or one week.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's only, that's only.
I don't know what it is.
I think, I think that's correct, because they wouldn't have had nineteen calls on Monday.
Well, for a whole month, it looked like they had more than that. They only got two vehicle accidents in one.
I don't think we can go back to twenty-eight medical emergencies.
We can go back and, uh, report it. I mean, we can go back and compare it to previous months, but.
Well, please ask them if it's weekly or monthly.
Well, I think it's gotta be weekly, because, look, it, uh, not, not matter, twenty-eight, but medical emergencies, a single digit digits in, say, twenty-eight, or. Um, okay, where's the, where's the? I messed something up.
If it were a weekly tally, that would be thirty-eight calls per service a day. And I don't, I think that that's not correct.
Yeah, like I said, medical emergency, there's, let's see, twelve.
It's twenty-eight total.
Total, but those numbers don't add up.
Where does, where does it say?
Four, eight, twelve, fourteen, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
They had, uh.
Does that add up?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I can't see where it tells us how many times you stop somebody and I'm gonna make.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because that was, uh, I know there was at least one, but it was me.
You need to go to his house and write him a code.
So where's the code for traffic stop?
I don't see it.
Yeah, it's suspicious it ends with S. There might be T through Z.
Exactly.
You can get the whole report. Now, it's not all alphabet, it's pretty close.
We had traffic stops.
Where?
Where?
On the second page.
We didn't get the second.
I haven't got a second page.
No, I didn't either.
Although we had posted it on the first page. Well, who only posted the first? You shouldn't have said "fuck." I don't have a clue.
Well, there's two pages to the report.
Okay, that's what we sent somewhere.
We didn't.
For those of us who are fully informed.
Well. Why don't you resend us the file, Lynn, again?
Let me see if I have.
No, I, I would have scanned, yeah, I suppose it's possible, but when I ran it through the scan, the pages stuck together.
No. Yeah, there's only one page on the document you sent us.
Because I gave the, uh, you know, he gave me the hard copy and I scanned it.
Operator.
And, uh.
How many traffic stops did they make? Yes, you have the numbers. That would be interesting.
One, but it was a good one.
I got a warning.
They made eighteen traffic stops.
How many tickets?
I don't know. All right, moving on to the fire department report. This is the standard report we get every week for a month, during the month from Chief Eads. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
He did that a little bit differently this month, too. I don't think.
Yeah.
We didn't skip the other reports we had been sending. We just got the incident report.
Well, that could have been operator error, too.
The personnel summary, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, the personnel summary.
For some reason, it didn't get posted in the documents, but here's the personnel summary.
I got the personnel one, but.
Got it in the email, it's just not in the, uh, work documents.
That would, that would be my fault, my operator error.
Okay.
Okay.
We're exposing our.
Our multi-talented workforce, and we are paid so well.
You get what you pay for.
All right. Broadband committee. Uh, who wants to speak to this?
I'll, I'll speak to it.
Okay.
Based on a rough count, we got, yeah, the, that's the day old, did you check the day on the internet responses?
I think it's about sixty, sixty-eight.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so we're, we're pushing not over two hundred.
You have card, do you have cards that make up that difference? Is that wrong?
Well, he's, he's turned in almost a hundred and fifty.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, I got twenty, uh, twenty at Rotary, and I think several that didn't fill them out at Rotary. Remember, do it online once, then show. Wes said he thought he had, how many, Wes?
I'm not sure from, it's our third church, um. I would guess there should have been fifteen or twenty.
Yeah, and then, uh, few of the church brought my stack. Yeah, we were over two hundred.
Yeah. I passed that information, not quite that much, uh, I mean, I didn't have that number, but I passed on to Sandy Martin, the, um, the good start we've gotten, and we may end up leaving the county in a number of responses.
Yeah, I lost one card. Somebody, it said, uh, love Cox, great service, great price.
Yeah.
You lost that one?
No. It said. Doggy.
Somebody burned up. Spontaneous combustion.
There are seventy-one responses on the online survey.
Okay.
One of those is fine.
I think it said that three hundred.
Yeah, we, we made it to fifty to three hundred, so.
I filled mine out today, and then about an hour later, my TV. So. So far, bad is, I think, uh, in the running for the, for the award for most surveys collected. I thought we'd get him a plaque with a little buffering symbol on it.
A lot of those are for those golfers, and they're not very allowed.
Give me, give me something simple that I can do it. Yeah.
Some of those actually carry a tip gun, so I didn't know.
Yeah, if the golfers fill them out, you know darn well the numbers are exaggerated.
The only thing, I'm not clear, and you may have more information, because I had to miss that last meeting. Uh, what are we to do with it? Just give it to Sandy, or are we supposed to draft a report, or what?
Well, I, we, we should talk about that, because I was thinking, since this, you know, the, the online Google thing categorizes it nice in, uh, in Excel spreadsheet. You know, I can, you know, I thought maybe Chris could load that, load that data in, you know, take a hundred and fifty surveys.
How much time you asked? I know it.
And, uh, and, and give Sandy, I mean, we can give her the cards, too, but.
Yeah.
I'd give her the spreadsheet, and she ought to be able to merge that into whatever database she's generating.
Yep.
Okay, so we're, we're holding our own on the survey.
Well, do we have anyplace else to get some?
Did the, did the gentleman from, uh, the Lutheran Church, did he?
I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't know.
No.
No.
Well, I'll, I'll bring this up, uh, the email that I sent you this afternoon was proposing that you put out a mayor's message asking people to fill out the survey.
Okay.
And we'll put that on social media. The people, you've been getting views anywhere from four hundred to eight, nine hundred people looking at your mayor's message. I think if you put it out as a mayor's message, people will pay attention to it, and they can click on the link and go right to the survey.
Hey, Dan, when you do that, you may mention that if you have a friend that does not have internet at all.
Yeah, that.
That's a good point, yeah.
That's my main concern, is that we're, and we're, the project is supposed to bring broadband to the underserved, and I'm afraid we're missing the entire population of our.
Yeah, exactly. Say, do you know people that can't get it, don't have it?
Mm-hmm.
Do a survey for them.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you look at the, at the survey results, especially those online, you know, there's, there's some inaccuracy in there, because people don't really know what they have, because at least three people said that they got, that they had fiber, and nobody in there had one's fiber.
Yeah, I, it's quite a lot of fiber, at least very few.
Uh, they, they probably have coax and, and just don't realize it.
They have three hundred would be what? Twenty percent population.
And it's households, it's households, so.
Yeah, I mean, wow, I doubt, the county's got anywhere near twenty percent, it would be enormous.
Twenty-five percent at least.
But like Dan said, the, under the non-serve, we don't have any problem.
Yeah.
There may be one or two, the churches may, but.
I got one or two, but I don't know how the reaper staff, to be honest with you. If I go to where it goes, I go to where it goes.
Well, we might pick up some until, until push it into the iris. I'm sure.
I was hoping we'd pick up a few of those through the churches that.
Well, we may have.
We did.
Well, there were a few of the, of the, uh, online survey, they said, you know, I was, I, I'm not able to get, like, there were two or three of them I picked out, and that was early on, when we only had about fifty responses that said they didn't have, couldn't get.
Okay. Anything else on broadband, planning commission?
The planning commission is, uh, preparing for an August eighth public hearing. Those documents are available online on our planning commission page, on the meetings and minutes. You scroll down, you'll see the planning commission documents for the hearing. You have the hearing agenda and the documents for that, and also for the following meeting. So it's about a continued, or it's about a couple of applications for zoning.
One of them being our own request.
Yes.
For ourselves.
So that's gonna be a topic.
We put up the hundred dollar?
Excuse me?
Put up a hundred dollar?
Do we have the authority?
For the application.
We have the authority to waive that fee?
No.
And, I mean, do we?
That's not a joke.
It's not, it's not a common practice in government to charge yourself and pay yourself.
I understand that.
So we haven't talked about that issue.
We, we just take a hundred dollars and send it back to the general fund?
I'm confused. What are you talking about? The changing form, the commercial zones from?
Yeah.
That's not a zoning request, that's a change in our regulations.
What?
Okay, okay.
We have to have a hearing on changes of regulations.
Okay.
We're not applying for a zoning change.
Oh, well, did you apply for a conditional use permit?
We did not, the city did not do that.
Okay, um, Aaron, you're up. Lee, uh, why don't you give us a little rundown on where we are on code enforcement? Uh, why don't, why don't you get up and use the mic?
Oh, I need to use the podium? You need to be somebody? Okay.
Turn the mic on, and, uh, and then.
Turn on the microphone.
And then go over the software that.
If you can't hear me, you got bigger problems, so.
It's not us, it's, uh, it's the recorder.
Okay, so, as everybody knows, it's, I've been on the code enforcement for about twelve months now. Um, and during that time, of course, we just got the ability to issue citations that were actually gonna be valid and that would follow through with the district court within the last month, last few weeks. So, um, I have been able to make contact with numerous violators. Um, most of them, I have found, for the most part, they're, they're willing to correct the, the issues once you bring them to their attention, but there are always going to be some that are, we've got some, what, uh, Dan and I call heavy hitters that are, uh, sworn to destroy everything that comes into their path. So, um, we have been, I have been speaking with some of the surrounding areas with their code enforcement people, trying to see what they're doing, because the, the old spreadsheet just doesn't track. Um, it doesn't remind you of things, it doesn't give you a place to put photos or updates or any changes or anything like that. It's, it's a straight spreadsheet, which is, is very typical for starting out. I mean, for a rudimentary cause, it was, it was able to, uh, allow me to track, to some degree, uh, the violations that were called in with people, because I take calls every single day, five days a week. Um, sometimes on the weekends, so, uh, I have been tracking those and I've got probably twenty-five on my spreadsheet right now. And half of those of those.
That are on the clock?
Say again?
That are on the clock, they've got so many days to do it.
No, we, that's, that's one of the issues that we've had, is I try to, there, there's nowhere to edit. To really put in, okay, follow up in thirty days, put a calendar reminder of some sort, I just go through the spreadsheet and it's like, okay. I haven't contacted this guy in a while, so I'll go call them. Um, the biggest problem I'm having is, uh, tracking people down. Because I get, somebody calls and says, this address is doing this thing, they have trash in their yard, they have grass that's shoulder high. And so I can go and look at the Carroll County, uh, assessor's office. I can go pull up on the, the data scout, I can pull that up and get the owner of the property. But in a lot of cases, looking at the owner of the property, I need to get a phone number and/or an email address to try to reach out to him, because. I wanna make first contact and say, look, code enforcement, I'd like to give you the opportunity to clean this up before we put this on the books. And several times we've had people have said, okay, no problem, they cleaned it up. Um, in some cases, as we saw back here on Dogwood, we've had to make more, you know. More, more presence, um, for them and we've gotten some of it cleaned up, but. After fifty years of no code enforcement at all, you're not gonna be able to fix this overnight, so it's gonna take time. And it's gonna take persistence and we are, I have been previewing software. Uh, and checking with other code enforcement people around here, most of the code enforcement people around here, their code enforcement is. Built in with their law enforcement, so, um, the, because they have their own police departments, the police department kinda splits out the code enforcement. Since they're all in the same office, so I wasn't able to really utilize their. Ideas, because they're kind of in a software that, once we have a law enforcement here, maybe we can move towards that, but for the time being. Um, I, I researched, I spent several weeks researching and. I had a, an online, uh, demo with a company called I Work Systems. And they have a code enforcement software package. That does all the things that, that I need done, that we need done as a city. It allows, it allows us to track, it allows anyone here to go in and view what's, what's going on. Pictures, updates, uh, warnings, anything that's going on with the properties, it tracks all of those. In a very, a very friendly, user-friendly manner, um. The package has a, an annual cost right now of about two thousand dollars. There's a one-time setup fee that they show as thirteen hundred dollars, but he said we can work with that. And what they're gonna do is they're going to ingest all of our ordinances, um. They've also got GIS data, so if I'm out driving around and I see a violation, I can actually pull out my phone. And drop a pin right there where that violation is, and that will remind me when I get home, get on the computer, take pictures, whatever else. I can do all those things from my phone, from my laptop, from my computer, or from right here on these desks, so. Um, it's all web-based, there's nothing located here on, on, on the grounds, so. It's a, uh, service as a service is what it's called, um, and support is round the clock. There's no ninety-day trial or anything like that, they just say, you know, if you need support, call us, we'll help you and, and. It's very insightful and it's very easy to update, make changes. And to follow, the biggest thing is, is the follow-through, because if I say, you've got thirty days and I'm gonna come back and visit you. In thirty days, I need something to pop up and say, you need to go visit this address, so. That's been the biggest problem I've had is, you know, finding, finding the violations and then tracking them and then keeping track on them. Because the, the keeping track of them gets to be. With the, with the spreadsheet, it's really difficult, plus if you have pictures, there's nowhere to put them in a spreadsheet. I mean, you can stick pictures in there, but it's gonna make it really ugly really fast, so. That's what we're looking at right now, and that's what I, I have presented to Dan and I, I sent a link, I'm sorry that there's not more. Of a pamphlet or a flyer that you can put your hands on and look at, but. The software is really just that simple, it's as simple as the website shows it. And it allows you to also input, I'll give you just a second, it allows you to input packages for. In the event that the building inspector wants to go do his stuff online, it allows you, they, it's a module, they just, they add it to it and it's there. And he can get on there and do all those things, it also allows other, other members of enforcement. Type things to do their acts as well, it's just a module that plugs into it, so. That's where we're at, yes sir, what can I do for you?
Does it have communication tools in itself and you're writing in the follow-up for John Q Public and you press a button? It creates email and, and you attach stuff to it, so that's all you have to do is click some buttons?
That's correct.
Okay.
It, it, it actually has, they call it a letter library of pre-formed, pre-written letters.
Okay.
All you do is, is when it pulls up on yours, it knows this is your header, this is who you are, because it's who you're logged in as. And you just put in, you click on, I want item number forty-six. Item number forty-six, it fills in the name, address, all the information that you have about it. As well as provides links for, uh, and also provides photos, it gives thumbnails of each of the photos that you've taken. To say, I need these things corrected. And then you can send that letter to them, you can post it on your door, or you could actually have a letter library that allows you to create door hangers. Warning, this is, you know, the code violation, you have, you know, you have thirty days to clear up your yard. Uh, move these junk cars out, get the boat out of the front yard, whatever. And I can just hang a door tag, I don't have to bother them. And then I can come back in thirty days and it says, go back in thirty days and check on them, fourteen days, whatever. It's, it's whatever I set.
Okay.
And I say, fourteen days later, I go out and I go by, they haven't fixed it, so at that point, I can actually get on my phone. And I can say, problem's not fixed, it'll print out at my house, a letter, a generated letter, I can put it in the mail or I can take it by and hand it to them.
So it keeps all this information for a certain property, any poll or, or a certain violation?
Yes, and when you, when you do have to go to court, in some cases, we're gonna have to go to, to district court. It actually puts everything in a file and you can go in there and say, print this file, it'll print all the documents and all the photos and everything associated with that particular. Address.
And all of that information needs to be forwarded to the prosecuting attorney and the district court clerk, so you have to have. Uh, you know, kind of a foolproof way of putting together a complete package.
With some of the violators that we're tracking right now, if we misstep even a little bit, it's gonna set us back to zero. Because they're, they are, they are ready for bear and they, they, they wanna fight every step of the way, so. Uh, if we don't come to them with our ducks completely in a row, they're gonna find that, they're gonna find something. And they're gonna find a way to get out of it, so. We're not trying to, a, as I tell everybody that calls me, we're not the Gestapo, we're not trying to, you know, hunt you down. We just want things to, because most of us have followed the rules, we keep our yards nice, we keep our, you know, we keep everything up. We just want everybody else to follow the same set of rules that we are. And that's, that's my biggest challenge at this point with the twenty-some violators that I have currently.
Sir, are they under notice now?
They are not. There are some that I have made contact with, but, but until we had the ability to take them to district court. I couldn't threaten them with anything, it would be just like if you or anybody at this table was to go up to them and say, you need to clean up your yard, and he'll say, or what? So.
Well, we've had that district court agreement a couple, three months now.
Hmm, not quite that long.
I know, but I was told when we were trying, asking them to get to district court, that, that we had the list of people. That we had given notice to, and none of them was like thirteen.
Now you're telling me we have.
We have, we have, they have been, they have been notified, but until this point, we haven't had a way to really, it's just been an idle threat.
Uh, I know that some people on the council here are not happy with the speed at which we're moving. But it took fifty years to create this problem, it's not gonna take, it's gonna take more than three months to fix.
Rome was not built in a day, neither will the code enforcement.
And we're, we're learning how to do this from scratch, so.
I, I know Dan, but he's been on, we've been having for a year, we've identified months ago these supposed thirteen problems that identified immediately and.
I think you're, I think you're totally overlooking the fact that he said that he has gotten numerous problems solved. Without going to the, to the extent of writing citations, writing citations is the last resort. It's not the first step in the process.
I know, our office is, tells out, you give them a notice that they got a problem and give thirty days to correct it. Then you give a citation if they don't do it, but what's, why?
What do you, what do you do with a citation when you don't have an agreement with the district court that's been lined out?
We, we knew we were gonna get that, we've had it for about six weeks now.
Okay, and, and in six weeks?
And we still haven't put out a notice.
I was waiting for this time because, again, I need to have everything lined out, because the people that are violators are serious violators. And if you miss any piece, they're gonna come after you. And if that's not good enough, then that's on me, but. I need this software in place so I can lay everything out.
Aaron?
Yes ma'am.
Um, can you tell us again the cost of?
The, the annual cost for the software is two thousand dollars. There's a one-time setup fee that they have listed at thirteen hundred dollars, but he said they're gonna negotiate with that, so it could, it will probably be considerably lower than that.
So we would expect two thousand on going year to year?
Year to year, yes.
As they raise it?
That's correct.
Can I, man, you know what it would cost for the module for the, uh, building inspector?
I do not know offhand, because that was, that was, that's a whole separate salesperson.
Okay.
Aaron, is that what, our, our code specifies thirty days to get the situation corrected?
It, it's, it's based on, I mean, I can't expect a guy, if, if, for instance, we have a violator that has no roof on his house, there's no shingles. I can't expect him to get a roof on his house in thirty days. So, I would say, okay, you got sixty days, or you got ninety days. You know, I don't wanna be unreasonable, because then you just create more strife where there doesn't need to be. The purpose is to get it cleaned up, it's not to get these people mad. Cause the madder they get, the less prone they're going to be to fix the issue. That is what I have discovered in the last twelve months of doing this, is if you come at them nice, they generally try to fix it. If you come at them and say, fix this or else, then they're gonna stand, they're gonna stand hard and they're gonna say, come at me. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna be that way, I mean, there's, there's, there's a very fine line between being nice and not being nice and. When it's time to cross it, we will.
Man, does our code specify?
I don't know, I'm looking for it. Well, where do I, it's not in our planning and zoning, it's in, where is it at?
Nuisance ordinance?
I don't know, offhand.
Aaron, what's the name of that software you were talking about?
It's with a company called I Work Systems, I W O R Q. I Work Systems.
We. Do they have like a. A test or something we could look at to kind of?
They, they do not, uh, they, they had one and, and he said if you needed one, he could, he could join in and do it virtually, the way he did with me. Cause I was on with him for two hours in a virtual session, he showed me li- live examples of, we created a new case. And we dropped a pin and he showed me all the different features.
I don't, yeah, I'm just thinking of a website that I could go to, if I can get an overview of.
They have a, they have a website.
Well, their, their website gives you an overview of everything it does, the one that he quoted.
But it is a very, very, very basic.
I looked at that website, it looked like excellent software to me.
Well, there's, there are so many features in there, it would be difficult to put all of those out, out on the website, you know?
I agree, and, but it looked like it was flexible and, and intuitive to use, easy to use. And, um, also, uh, it had really good reviews.
Right, that, and that's, that's what I've been studying for the last few weeks, is trying to find something that has all of the things that we need. Because in the event that I hit the lottery tomorrow and I disappear, somebody else is gonna have to come in and step into my place and I, I would, I would like for anybody at this table. To be able to walk in and do the software and if you get something that's very complex and very difficult to run. Then the learning curve gets to be a lot bigger, I mean, I'm, I'm in IT, so it's a little bit easier for me, but there's still gonna be a learning curve for me.
I think from what I read, it, it's one of the easiest ones to use, for cities to use.
That's correct. Plus it, you can work on your, you, you can do it on your phone, I can take pictures of the violations right there on site, upload them from where I'm at. And when I get home, they're ready to go.
And also the fact that it runs in the cloud is a great benefit to.
That is.
But you could be taking those photos now and maybe pass.
I've got probably three hundred photos that I've taken.
Say you got the one down here on eleven?
I've got several.
I would like to make a motion that we get that software for Aaron, let him start using it.
Let them make a motion to purchase the I Works, uh, software for code enforcement, let them second it, any discussion? Home favor say hi?
Hi.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay will purchase the software. Any other questions for Aaron? Again, I want to stress that. There has been a lot of work done with code enforcement, they haven't drug anybody to court yet, but there has been a lot of work done on code enforcement. As an example, a couple of weeks ago, a brand-new little tiny house showed up on Haddock Lane. Guy bought, uh, three lots on the cul-de-sac in Haddock Lane and he fully intends to build a house there someday. But in the meantime, you figure he just put himself a little, a little tiny house like, uh, one of these Durkson buildings. You know, on the side of the road and put up a mailbox across the street and everything. And, uh, we got ahold of him and the next day it was gone, so I mean, it's, there, you don't have to take everybody to court to get things done.
And it, and if anybody's been driving up and down, uh, Sailboat Drive for the last two or three months. You, you would have noticed a trailer sitting there that, in front of that house that's being built. I contacted him two weeks ago and I asked him nicely, need you to move your trailer. He said, well, I'm not done with my house yet, and I said, that's not what I said, I said, I need you to move your trailer. So, I ended up calling back a week later, cause I put myself a follow-up and I said. I'm having more complaints, because I got calls every day about it from, there's a lot of people that drove past it. And I believe the trailer was moved three days later, so. That's the way I've been handling these things, some of them handle it, if I told him, if you don't move it, I'm gonna cite you, we'd have a problem. But I asked him and then I asked him again, I followed through, he moved it, it's gone. So that's, that's the way I have tried to handle things up to this point, I understand there's gonna be some people that disagree with my ways. But I was put into this position with zero experience, nobody had experience, I've got nobody to call. So, I'm kinda feeling my way along in the dark, just like anybody else would.
Did you call any municipalities that don't use police officers?
I have, I, I, I actually followed the guy in Green Forest for a day. And he's been doing it for four years now, I believe, he's had four or five years to get his, but he said his first year was terrible. He said every door he knocked on, they slammed the door in his face, they told him to get the heck off of his property, et cetera, et cetera, and. Well. I'm trying to be nicer. But that's, you know, once I get the software in place, we will be doing all of the things that you guys are concerned about. And I understand, I'm concerned about it too, because I live here. And I want it fixed just as badly as you do.
I'm not trying to indict you at all, I, I think you're well-intentioned.
I'm not trying to indict you at all, I, I think you're well-intentioned and you're doing it the right way, but I, I just feel that if we could make an example out of somebody.
We have.
But the public doesn't know that?
They do.
That.
Dogwood Lane, perfect example.
The, the people that drive up past Dogwood Lane are few and far between.
I was getting calls about that two or three times a day.
How many do you get on, on the country club, that house with the grass over the roof that?
Uh, my, my wife bothers me about it every day.
So where do we stand on that? Did I tell you to get the hell out of there?
Yes. So when I hang something on his door, something that has some teeth in it, the cars will move and the grass will come down, or they'll be paying five hundred dollars to the district court. And that, that's one that's gonna tell you, that's gonna be a fourteen-day violation. You've got fourteen days, cutting the grass doesn't take thirty days, moving the car doesn't take thirty days.
This one is that tall.
That may be, that may be the most visible violator because it's right on Country Club Drive.
But that's because you drop by there.
But it's certainly not our worst problem.
Well, no, but it would show that we're, we're doing something, and I, you know, that, the Dogwood, that was a great accomplishment to get that done.
That was thirty-two hours of effort, by the way, thirty-two hours of my effort.
The, the county got it cleaned up pretty quickly, and then they just dumped the nose and, like, dope.
Right, but that, that's what I'm saying is, is I actually worked with the homeowner to get the squatters out of the house, and the squatters who had allowed other squatters into the house, I worked with them and law enforcement to get them out, they worked to get the house boarded up because they broke back into the house. And so that house, and I've also been working with the investor who bought the house to get the house, to get the violations fixed, because he didn't want me coming knocking on his door either, so, again.
I also wanna, I also wanna stress the fact that, that some of these people that Aaron's gonna be having to confront are very dangerous people. One of them was recently in a fight with his neighbor and he broke his collarbone.
Broke his collarbone. These are new neighbors too, they just moved in.
One of them was recently involved in a fight with his neighbor, he pulled out a knife and cut the guy in his chest.
Oh my god.
These are the kinds of people that we're working with, so it's not as easy as just hanging something on his door and then coming back in thirty days and taking him to court. These are very dangerous people that we're working with, and we have to deal with it very carefully, and we will have to work with law enforcement to get it done.
But that's, those are the people that are the number-one reason why I don't want anything to go wrong. When I, when I present this to the prosecuting attorney, and he says, you're missing this, your case is blown. I don't want that to happen because then the guy gets another thirty days or sixty days, and then he's gonna be mad. So rather than have that happen, because my house is just as vulnerable as anybody else's, and everybody knows who I am and they know where I live, so I have to protect everything, including my own house.
Okay, anything else for Aaron? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. Cole, we promised for that.
Let, let Aaron do this one too.
Uh, this is Cole Wighill with Good Shepherd, if you haven't met him before, and Ken has been working with Cole on, uh, trying to come up with a plan for Holiday Island for animal control, maybe more specifically dog control, uh, maybe a little bit with cats, but mostly our animal control problems revolve around dogs, so, um, Cole, if you wanna kind of make a pitch about what, what you think you can do for Holiday Island?
Well, yeah, we've been talking, oh, go ahead.
Um, I sent you all the copy of the email that Cole sent us, and he had a couple of paragraphs in there, and an overview of what he was talking about, and I thought that was very insightful, uh, and also quite of a company, I mean, it's pretty, pretty broad approach to it, and, uh, I think there's the figures in there I think we can work with. I, I, I think it, uh?
No, we didn't get any.
Well, I, um, I thought I sent you all that, or did I just send it to Dan and then he forwarded, and he cut off the, uh?
He, he sent out the ordinance.
Yeah, I got that. I, I sent out the ordinance, I might not have sent the actual original email that had the, the figures in it, but Cole can go over that.
Okay. Do you have that?
Yeah, I can pull it up, let me.
The, the dialogue you sent was, was?
Okay.
I thought that was.
So, and what you got with this, this sort of a rough draft of an animal ordinance, to sort of pull from some other places, looking at best practices, is from other Arkansas cities, so it's definitely not a finalized ordinance, and attorney would need to finalize that, um, but what I, what I tried to put together is some just basic, uh, code for the city that covers some of your biggest issues, primarily in Arkansas, and most animal controls deal only, are primarily with dogs, with a few exceptions, or maybe a couple of code mentions of cats, but dogs, as far as public safety and public health, are generally a much bigger issue. Uh, and what the models that I sent sort of do is just set up a basic citation structure and some basic authorizations for somebody to work with the city or for the city to enforce these codes. Uh, the main, you know, the biggest one, I think, uh, for the city is either running at large, uh, dogs, I think that's probably what most of the complaints that the mayor gets are just dogs running at large, so we definitely want to have some sort of rule with that, um, and also there's a dumping ordinance, and a couple of, in, um, you know, cruelty or minimum care for standards, and those are all things that we can look at deeper, depending on what sort of level Holiday Island wants. Uh, but the idea behind all of this is similar to what Aaron's trying to do with code enforcement, in that primarily whatever we're doing, we wanna work with the community, especially since we'd be coming into a community that has not had prior regulation. So people are just used to doing things, things a certain way, so we don't wanna just come in, round up everybody's dogs that are loose, take them to the shelter and say, good luck. Um, we definitely want to have that grace period and that understanding, and really wanna get people, uh, an enforcement person or a service individual that would be dedicated towards working with the community, uh, to primarily return these dogs, uh, back to their homes, uh, bring the ones in that need to come in, and then provide additional services. So what, what I added on that email, um, is, and what I was asked, uh, is what would it take for Good Shepherd to either serve as the impound? Uh, we already have a shelter, uh, in, between Eureka and Berryville, and my, my personal stance on that is, we won't take an impound contract unless we also have the community, in the community contract, because otherwise you end up with what happens a lot of times with these sort of split contracts. You have one person with all the authority, whose job is to go around and pick up dogs, and you have somebody else, the nonprofit or us, with all the responsibility, who now has to, to take care of whatever happens to these dogs, and the person in the city doesn't have the motivation or incentive to make sure the dogs get back to their home.
So, so you wanna pick them up and shelter them?
Right, so that would be the sort of contract that we would be looking for, which would be a complete service contract, and the idea behind that is that most dogs that are running at large, that are owned animals, are not very far from their home, and so we want somebody in the community, uh, that instead of just seeing that dog's running loose, I'm gonna pick it up and take it halfway across the county, I'm gonna spend an hour or however long it is, trying to see if this dog lives around here, and returning it to its home. Cause the reality is that for every mile that we remove a dog from where you found it, if that is an actually owned animal, its chances of getting home reduce with every mile. So we wanna have that focus of trying to do as much of the reunification in the city, and then of course, if you have a regular person doing that operation, they're gonna get to know, you know, I know where that dog goes, I know who it belongs to, um, and then we really try to instill the service mindset of, okay, now why did that dog get out? And what can we do to help that community member, uh, keep their dog inside, so it is no longer a nuisance, but it's, we're also not just punishing them for an issue with their, uh, family member. So I did look broadly at what this would take, and if we decide this is a direction that we wanna go further, we can get more detail into it, but what I kind of figured out, um, is ballpark here to do, like a part-time animal services, uh, person or officer, however you wanted to call it, in Carol, uh, in Holiday Island for twenty hours a week, and that would also, that includes a services person, who would have a truck or a vehicle, um, and maybe a desk in the city, if the city provided a desk, and who's primarily, primary job is patrolling the city and, uh, building those relationships and providing animal services. Uh, with that, we would have the impound, uh, contract where we would guarantee, uh, I think we're looking at three kennel spaces, so that at all times, if there's a dog from Holiday Island that need a place to go, that we will have three Holiday Island kennels, um, yeah, at our impound. And with that comes, uh, vaccinations, sterilization, so the whole package of what it takes to run an impound.
Is that one dog per kennel?
Yes, generally one dog per kennel. Now, if we were to impound a mom with puppies, right, that dog, that'd be more than one dog, or maybe it's a couple of small dogs that have, that were running together, they may be housed together, but, uh, in general, especially since most of the dogs that are running at large are medium-to-large dogs, it's one dog per kennel. And so sort of that complete package, um, which I, which would mean that dogs that do come through the impound would end up with vaccines and microchips, uh, if they stayed through the stray hole, they would end up being sterilized. Um, we could also look at building into the contracts certain community engagement things, uh, including vaccine clinics out in Holiday Island, um, different things like that, that we could really enhance, uh, our services to the community. And my ballpark with that, and again, we would need to get deeper, would be between thirty to forty thousand a year, but that would get you a full turnkey services operation, uh, that is a community-focused, um, with, you know, there will be some enforcement power, but really the idea is that almost, you know, in most places, seventy-five percent of your issues with animals can be resolved right there in the field, either by returning that animal, making those contacts, and really building that community, uh, and that pet-friendly community, so, um, and then that was just, and then these ordinances are kind of my recommendations of the directions to go in that direction.
And any of the communities you work with require state license for dogs?
Yeah, so, uh, Eureka, Green Forest, and I believe Berryville, um, all require licenses. Uh, I will say that I know Eureka probably has one license for every fifty dogs that live there. So the licensing schemes are not particularly effective, um, and there are ways that you could build that in, what we would recommend is you sort of do a lifetime free license with a microchip. That way, whenever that dog gets out, it's a scanned microchip, whether it has a collar or not, and it, it becomes a much easier, uh, return.
If they're given rabies shot, they get a, they get a tag, which identifies the dog in the owner.
Right, if they do have a rabies tag, um, you, they can identify that, uh, the issue is if they ha, if they're wearing that tag, uh, you know, when they're running.
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, Dan's been getting the calls, I don't know, I, I think, what I see most of the time is lost dogs.
Are you never dead?
Yeah, I think most, most of the, most of the issue is going to be lost dogs, dogs that happen to get out of the yard, or dogs that are just running because there's been no, I mean, Carroll County does not have a, a lease regulation, uh, this area, there's been no, uh, lease regulations, so some people just, you know, open their door, the dog goes out, dog comes back, um, and that certainly will be where the sort of learning curve is in helping introduce people to the new regulations.
Like you say, it's a very comprehensive, uh, proposal, which, and it's one, one, one source, you know, uh, you know, you're not have to find a place where you found it, you're not have to hire a catcher, a dog catcher, uh, and he also gave me one, uh, proposal that's on cats, and I think that's primarily to do, uh, the colonies or?
Right, so the, yeah, the ordinances on cats are generally to allow people to do TNR, or, or manage a colony, so that's saying if I have a colony of cats that live in, you know, these are essentially usually feral cats, cats that aren't gonna be easily handable or able to be brought into, um, there's at least some regulation that says, I need to work on spaying, neutering those animals, uh, ear tipping them, making sure that they have rabies shots, but then that's okay for me to do that, and those aren't considered abandoned or wild animal, or animals that are being dumped or abandoned.
But, I, I think it's, uh, unreasonable.
Can, can you go over the fee again and what it includes?
So, yeah, what that would, what that would include would be, um, and, and again, so it'd be a, like a, basically a part-time person that we would, we would hire to do twenty hours on the clock in Holiday Island.
With a vehicle?
With a vehicle.
Okay.
And we wanna do that because it's important for this sort of thing to have somebody in the community, because we really wanna, we wanna reunite most of these dogs.
Yeah.
Um, so we wanna have somebody here instead of just being parked out of the shelter and calling and coming.
So would you hire someone that lived out there?
Ideally, yes, I mean, that, that would, um, again, is a part of just being engaged with the community, and, and the idea is to really build a community service. Uh, for a century, people have looked at animal control as an enforcement issue, and in reality, it's not very effective as an enforcement issue, punitive, um, you look at almost every study, uh, the more punitive you get, it's the, the less compliance you end up with. And so really want a chance, and, and Holiday Island has a very unique chance, or challenge, of being a new city, to start out with, we're gonna put in an animal services person here, but they're not here to write you a ticket now. They don't comply, you have repeat offenders, then we get into that, but primarily, they're here to figure out what's going on and to help this community, uh, be good pet owners.
So it's, it's mainly an effort to get our dog situation under control, whatever extent you can make that happen, and to provide services, take care of these gray dogs or dump and what have.
Right, so, yeah, so there's two, there's basically two dog populations that, that need help. We have the owned animals that are owned by people that are either getting out of their yard, um, fireworks scare them, or somebody is just not being as responsible as they should be and letting their dog run, so it's somebody to help get those dogs back home, maybe help repair a gate, or help figure out what went wrong, and help that person keep their animal secure, and then you do have an issue of dumped dogs or abandoned dogs, and this would be somebody that would go and pick those dogs up, and, uh, they would have a place to go, you know, at Good Shepherd within our program, uh, where then they would be held for the stray hold, and then once they are, once they're through our stray hold and our processing period with the city, you know, they would end up being transferred over essentially, cause even while they're at Good Shepherd, they're still city impounds, and they're still owned by the city of Holiday Island, or controlled by the city of Holiday Island. After that, hold date is up, then they're basically just become Good Shepherd dogs, like a lot of the dogs from Holiday Island.
And you're a no-kill shelter?
We are a no-kill shelter, yes.
So in your estimate, thirty to forty thousand, talking about twenty hours a week for patrol, what about the housing of these dogs you pick up? Is it included in the S?
That's, that's included in that, so that, that is a, that includes.
That's a whole package.
That is enforcement, um, or field, a field operation, and a sheltering operation.
How do those cities, uh, the other cities of Carroll County, I would ask, how do they fund their animal control?
Um, they're all, they, they are usually general funded or as part of the police department. I mean, nobody's able to fund animal control, like through licensing or anything like that, there's just not enough licensing revenue, so they usually come out of.
Any other body that finds tickets?
Uh, it, it depends, uh, all three, I mean, uh, so Jim Evans is with Eureka, uh, he will write tickets, but he generally knows everybody in town and knows where almost all the dogs go, and does a good job of getting them, uh, back home. Uh, same thing in Green Forest, where they've recently had a changeover with their animal control officer, and we've been working with him, cause he's a part of the police department there, uh, to adopt this similar model that we're doing here as far as that proactive field approach as opposed to the punitive approach. You know, and Berryville operates in a more traditional manner.
Do any cities like take pictures of the dogs they license?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Or make note of the breed or the size?
Some of them do have basic information, like so, like the Berryville license you can get, the Eureka license I believe you get from City Hall. Berryville license, you can actually get it from the different vet offices, and they, you know, report the basic information and give you the license tag. So it kind of depends on the city.
Because I could see that being a help to an animal control officer finding a lost dog.
Oh, yes.
Being able to reunite it with its family.
And I think that the, that there is value in, in licensing like that, and especially that's why we like, the newest model is basically doing microchips.
Microchips, definitely.
Right, so and saying if you want to, so in this case, Holiday Island dog license, if you own a dog in Holiday Island, you come get a microchip, and that's something that we could even supply through this animal control person here, who could have microchips on the truck, and microchip and licensed dogs. But that way, you know, they're, they're easy to find, and even if the collars are missing.
Well, that expense, I'm spending forty-nine dollars a year for my Home Again microchip. How do you get it so cheap that you can give it away?
We have programs that are designed for animal welfare.
Somebody else is paying for it, is what you're saying?
No, so like the one that we use now is a, it's called Font Nano. We buy it for four ninety-nine, no, it's actually three ninety-nine a chip, and that comes with a free lifetime registration. Most of these programs, like even Home Again, they have chips that we can buy with free lifetime registration, and how they make their money is that when, when you sign up, they're going to say, do you want the plus package? Or do you want the insurance package? Or do you want, you know, and that's where they make their money. But anything that we do with Good Shepherd, whatever our microchip vendor is, it will be a lot, free lifetime registration on the database.
Okay.
So how much do you charge the customer for four ninety-nine that you pay for?
Uh, we generally, our, our list price is like ten dollars for a microchip with lifetime registration.
Money, money, planning to help offset some of yours.
Right, and, but honestly, it's, it is a core mission part of our work, so a lot of the times, we'll, we run free microchip events, and you end up giving it away.
Agree to this agreement, I would think there'd be advantage of you doing, like you said, like a, a, a microchipping event out here, a spaying event.
Right, I mean, and that would be, you know, my, my desire would be to really use having somebody out here and having this to, to, to help build Holiday Island up as a truly, you know, pet-friendly, pet community.
Five years ago from a community that did that very regularly, had, uh, community events to, to get your dog microchipped, and, uh, you know, ten-dollar spaying, neutering, it's quite successful.
Yeah, and we would definitely do, we could definitely work that into as a part of this agreement, it's something that we would want to do. And we know that this type of animal services work is, is a true quality of life enhancement for a community, and that's, that's what we would, we don't want to be setting up as an enforcement agency, but more of a quality of life agency. And yeah, there's going to be some of the...
I think most people would view it that way out here, too.
Would you consider, uh, creating a dog park in that thirty to forty thousand maintenance of it? I'm just curious, because we're talking about spending thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars city money on people's dogs. And I haven't heard any reports how many people are getting bit, or how many garbage cans are getting ripped up. You know, I just haven't heard the negatives of dogs, other than they're running.
I was going to bring that up, that, that we need to, you know, we have to find the problem we're trying to fix.
Right.
And I think that, you know, Aaron gets most of the calls now, so I think we need to start keeping notes on the types of complaints. And, you know, Good Shepherd isn't going to help us if your neighbor's dog is pooping in your yard. But that's not part of their mission to...
I get calls about that, too.
Picking up the dog poop.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're not going to deal with the problem that, that the guy down the street has got an electric fence for his dog, an invisible fence for his dog, and his dog is very aggressive, and when we walk by, the dog comes, you know, running up to the edge of the property, you know, barking and growling, showing its teeth. And I don't trust that his invisible fence is going to contain that dog, so we want you to do something about that. You know, those are, I think that's more typically the kind of complaint we get. You know, we do have some stray dogs, we do have people that let their dog out, you know, they're, they're, you know, face it, you know, half of Holiday Island is very rural, and there's like farm dogs out there, you know, they just run loose all day long.
And we do have occasional dog bites.
Yeah, I'm surprised Ken Brown's not here, because he, he mentions that every week.
What was that?
Dog bites.
Dog bites, he mentioned that several times at that council meeting.
Well, and we would definitely, like in the, in the wireless fence example, and some of that would just depend on what the ordinance is, or on what could be done. But that's certainly something that, if we had somebody here, that we would say, could go out and talk and say, you know, maybe there's different options for those animals. But, I mean, that's really truly what it is, is trying to help the community solve problems and, and work together.
My, my, my biggest concern is, is not the dogs in the more, you know, in, in the population clusters. I think ninety-nine and a half percent of the people, you know, have their dogs under control, and the dogs are friendly, and, I mean, we have a little dog park in our backyard every morning when people walk their dogs, and, and they all play in the backyard. But, but, but it's, it's more the areas, you know, when you go driving around, like Aaron does, taking pictures of people with abandoned cars or in, in their yard and stuff like that, the majority of them also have two or three pit bulls running loose in the yard, and those are the ones. And, and then those pit bulls will wander up the road and kill somebody's chihuahua. Now, those are the kinds of problems I think that we're really dealing with.
Right, yeah, the, the at-large, the at-large dogs that are, that are, you know, nuisance animals.
Well, it's a location lends itself to people coming in and dumping and taking out the back entrance.
You know, and we do get, and we, I mean, I get calls weekly, you know, from, you know, around State Line or somewhere.
Yeah, there's a lady that lives up on...
That, that we'll call, with it, you know, dogs have been dumped in Holiday Island, you know, and, you know, right now, we don't have any field operations, so we don't have anybody who goes out and, and picks up animals. But, you know, we do get a number of calls, and, you know, as far as the dog park is concerned, it, you know, if we had somebody here for twenty hours a week, and part of that was they go out and, and help clean up the dog park and make sure things were good there, I mean, I think that's something that we could definitely look at.
Another question I had was, do you know if the other cities in Carroll County have leash laws? Or do they just say that a dog must be under control?
Um, I...
Leash laws, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, I believe all...
Being on a leash is under control, but if we were to implement having a dog under control without it being on a leash out here, is that done in other cities?
Um, you know, I don't know about that specifically. I think that becomes, generally, most laws are it is on a leash, because I think you get into the interpretation of what is under control at that point, which could be difficult.
I don't know that I've read any dog ordinance that specifically says your dog has to be on a leash if they're outside. I've read several that, that describe what's a suitable pen is depending on the size of the dog, and, you know, that they can't be chained to a tree and stuff like that, but fenced yards are usually acceptable.
But if they're just walking alongside you without being on a leash, a lot of people say, well, my dog will, is under control. It's under my control, he's been trained. And other people say, well, I'm scared of that because he's not on a leash.
Well...
And that's just, I mean, that becomes the, the public policy issue of the city.
About that, you know, what, does he know of any cities that have an under-control ordinance, not a leash law?
I've read some of the ordinances, and they, that's what it says, either on a leash or under visible control.
But he says he doesn't know of that in Carroll County.
Yeah, and I, and I, I mean, I just be honest, I don't, the, from my understanding is that it's generally on a leash, but I, that's something I can look at into, because it would be Eureka, Green Forest, and Berryville.
But we can go read their ordinances, I guess, and see how specific they are.
Yeah.
Cole, I just have one question.
Sure.
One of the...
I think you'd make an excellent.
I think he's pretty busy, right?
One of the, uh, one of the calls that I get on a regular basis is from a house that's got a problem, where the, the guy was actually beaten up in the street because he was making a comment, and about, the guy has feral cats around his house. And so I sat there at that house for thirty-five minutes in my car, and I counted sixteen cats coming out of this one house.
Wow.
Oddly enough, it's the same house, it's one of our heavy hitter violators, but the, the cats are going over to this guy's house and terrorizing his house, but he comes outside, and they're tearing the screens off of his house. They're, they're destroying his flower beds, because, you know, cats do what they do in flower beds. So, is there, does this policy that we're looking at have any kind of thing, I mean, fix and release feral cats? I, I understand that, but I doubt any of these are fixed.
Right, so that would be, you know, and you could put together as part of the ordinance, requiring that sort of thing, so...
Well, he says they're not his cats, so he's just saying, they just, they're here, they're not mine, I'm not feeding them, I'm not taking care of them.
You said they're coming out of his house, you mean out of the yard?
There is, well, they're coming out of his garage. His, his whole house is wide open, he hasn't, he has no doors or windows or anything.
I mean, generally what we would do...
Well, he's got his cats, I think.
Generally what we would do in a case like that would be to work with the homeowners there to, to at least track this, and, and it could be like, we're not going to charge you to do this, we're not, you know, we're not trying to get money for surgery, we have some TNR brands or things that we can try to find to get this done, let's work on trapping these cats, getting them, getting them sterilized.
Because I know you guys don't have the facilities, I mean...
Right, yeah, you can't just scoop up that many cats.
With Good Shepherd, so I know what you guys have, and bringing in sixteen cats all at once is going to be ridiculous.
Right.
Because your vet doesn't have time to get, to, to fix sixteen cats.
Right, so in something like that, we, we would probably work again on, on TNRing, and, and even though it doesn't do it a hundred percent, a lot of nuisance behavior with feral cats is reduced after sterilization.
Right.
So you have substantial reductions in, in like spraying, and yowling, and fighting, and all of that primarily once you start the sterilization process. And then what happens is that that population sort of starts to naturally decline. Because what we've seen with years of doing sort of trap and removal is the vacuum effect. So the cats are in that location because there are resources in that location for those cats. And if you take those cats out, there's other cats that are three blocks over, and they're going to move in, and they're going to reproduce into that level of, because now there's no other body to keep them away. So you sort of do the TNR, and then they sort of more slowly, through attrition, manage that population.
That was one point.
Yeah.
What is TNR?
That's trap, neuter, what's, now we call it T and VR, which is trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release. So that would be a cat, it would be trapped, it would come into the shelter or to a veterinary partner, receive its round, receive a rabies vaccination, probably receive its first round of vet care it ever had in its life, be fixed. Then we would ear tip it, which is just take it, the top of the left ear off, just a little, you know, little bit. And that way, in the field, if we have an animal control officer, he can go and say, oh, that cat's already been taken care of, we don't have to worry about it, and we can focus in other areas.
Okay, well, I think we got a little...
Great discussion.
We got some work to do, we're probably going to have to have a workshop on the, on drafting an ordinance, because, you know...
Get some public input, too.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, I don't want to write, I don't want to write an ordinance, I don't think it's practical to write an ordinance that, that will address everybody's fear and concern. You know, if, if, if it's generally accepted that invisible fences are an appropriate, you know, means of having your animal under control, I don't think that we can, you know, it wouldn't be practical for us to, to say that that's not adequate. Uh, I don't think a leash law is enforceable. You know, people have their dogs out in the backyard when they're, you know, weeding their flower beds, and the dog's laying on the ground right next to you, you're going to have a leash on them, you know?
That's why I like the language, under control.
Yeah.
I, I've seen some of them that say, under control.
I know there's a...
Well, that's, I mean, like, here it's just like running at large, right, and so there, 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 there is interpretation there, and some of that would be, and, you know, whoever was the enforcement person, you know, if the dog is walking with you, it's not as...
I think the argument, absolute leash law and, and license, and licensing, annual license, it'd be more troublesome than...
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think it would be that troublesome, and I think that would help us find homes for the running at large dogs, a lot of them.
If you, if you follow social media, it's a lot of the same dogs, they're, they're in there repeating, lost.
I think the microchipping is very beneficial. I was just thinking of identification, but...
Yeah, yeah, microchips are to the point to where they are essentially as cheap or cheaper than actual tags. And the problem with tags is the dog gets out without its collar on.
You can't buy a dog collar for ten dollars.
Right, and if the dog doesn't have its collar on, then the tags are, are not very helpful. But we also provide free tags, too, so we have a tag machine if anybody needs.
And there is, there is going to have to be, you know, at some point, you know, Aaron would get involved. If you get somebody that just, you know, like, every day, Good Shepherd picks up the same three dogs roaming at large, because the owner just won't do anything about it, right, and there's going to have to be some ability to cite that person, and, you know.
Right, and I think, you know, the, and we can look at different ways to do that and how that works. The way that my preference would be to almost do similar to where, because we also have, we have field services software that comes as a part of our management software, where we can record certain dogs, where they're located, all that stuff, very similar to what he was talking about today. And, you know, our person could say, listen, I picked up this dog five times, the people aren't listening, print out the case report, hand it either to, you know, code enforcement or whoever, and go, here's your evidence, issue your citation. But the, you know, but, but the idea of, of really trying to, to build that, the person that we have here is really, is oriented from an assistance point of just trying to assist the community and assist the individuals.
Okay, well, any more questions or anything you need me to, to look up or anything, just let me know. If, if we, you know, if we schedule a workshop for next month, we may ask you to come back again. We may buy you dinner or something.
I won't say no to that, for sure.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the, an ordinance to amend the building code. I'm going to suggest that, that I take a, a three minutes here to go over the changes to the building code, and, and just generally, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance by, by, how do they put it? By reading the, just the cover page of the ordinance. The, the, the main two things we're trying to address here is installation of solar panels and swimming pools. Initially, you know, we, we just, we didn't think that, that solar installations were, were of that much consequence. But the more we got into it, the more we found out that, you know, solar panels are actually pretty high voltage, and that there are requirements... But the more we got into it, the more we found out that, you know, um, solar panels are actually pretty high voltage. And that there are, um, requirements relative to, uh, fire department access to the roof. They, they have to be able to walk around them on a roof. Um, and, uh, you know, they have to be grounded properly and everything else. So, um, so we. And, and in talking with Carroll County, Carroll County didn't have any, doesn't currently have any requirement. That, um, that a solar installation have any level of inspection before it goes online. But they would prefer that we as a city require that a solar installation be inspected and signed off. By a licensed electrical inspector, and then we would provide Carroll Electric with that, uh, signed, uh, signed off inspection. Uh, and then they would, uh, allow that installation to go online. So that's primarily what we're doing here by adding a section on solar installation. I don't, unless somebody wants to read it, I don't know that, um, um, there, you know, it basically just says that it, that it has to be. Uh, done according to code and, um.
I read, all your changes are in red, right?
Yeah.
I read all of those.
And then swimming pools, I, quite frankly, never thought we'd have to have an ordinance covering in-ground swimming pools in Holiday Island. However, uh, you, we found out you can in fact, uh, go down to the bedrock. And then build a big retaining wall and fill it in with dirt and put in an in-ground pool. Um, cause somebody's doing that right now. So that, that caused us to think about, um, you know, the plumbing for that. Uh, drowning of, uh, of, uh, in-ground and above-ground pools. Because you don't want people getting electrocuted jumping in their swimming pool. And you do have to have them drained properly. So we added a small section on swimming pools. That's basically the changes that we've added. And then we added the B structures for that. On page eight, I did put in a, um, um, I added some information under detached permanent structures. Uh, to give it a little more clarification, uh, permanent or non-permanent structure over a hundred square feet. For rods, storage sheds and workshops.
And then this box to the right of that, there's some words missing. Square feet under name of something.
Hundred square feet of block.
I think you borrowed that from the old, uh, planning commission notes, cause I see that here. And this next page has the remaining text. Structure that may or may not be included in mechanic equivalent.
Correct.
Those words are missing.
And it's been that way since day one?
Yes, sir.
I found a little, uh, error on page four too, very minor, minor thing, the, at the top of the page, the fourth bullet.
Hang, hang on one second. Let me, I'll copy this down.
Okay.
Right after you sent me that email, I reread this two or three times and I still didn't see that.
See it? Yeah. Are you going to include the two hundred and forty minimum? That was the last thing on that.
And that was their minimum fee probably.
Okay.
So we tried twenty-four dollars to.
Okay.
For a hundred square feet.
Linda said you had something on page four?
Page four, the fourth bullet, solar panels is issued twice. And some of the panels, part of this is solar panels, solar.
I didn't, solar panels.
Oh, I see. Solar panels was already in there.
Yeah, it was already in there. Some pools.
I was noticing in that one, do you want solar panels repeated?
No, I just scratched.
Okay.
I scratched one of them.
Okay. Then I had a concern about the, the dumping, the, uh. Getting rid of the water into the sewer. And the research has been found that it requires some intermediate, um, storage of that to make sure that the water is suitable. We're putting in the sanitary sewer. Should we point that out in our ordinance rather than just saying it has to be according to the plumbing code?
Uh-huh. We ought to put this on the floor before we go. And those are changes.
Oh.
Just to be above floor.
We haven't moved anything yet.
Well, I was, you know, I, I, I.
I think making corrections is, is proper when you start.
What they do is that.
Add things and. Question things.
Yeah, you can give me the motion to discuss it.
All right.
I was wondering about, I think it was in there where it says when you drain a pool, it has to drain into the sewer system.
Let, let's, let's, let's make the motion first. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero fifteen. Ordinance updating the building code for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. Summon jury in a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now technically we should read the title page of the ordinance and then go into discussion. So Wes, you wanna read that?
Sure. Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero fifteen. An ordinance updating the building code for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Holiday Island, as previously passed ordinance, is adopting a building code. For the city of Holiday Island and whereas from time to time. Provisions and updates to that building code are necessary. Now therefore, being entertained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That the city council of the city of Holiday Island does hereby adopt the following changes. To the city of Holiday Island building code. Since projects impacted by these revisions to the building code are pending. An emergency is declared to exist and the ordinance shall become effective upon passage. That's approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of seven eighteen twenty-three. Approved, Dan, Daniel P. S. Mayor, attached, West Lake Teleporter Pressure.
Okay. Now we can move back into discussion and rerun. Page, what page, where we at?
The range of the swimming pool water, page seven.
Page seven, yeah. I guess I could be more specific or we could be more specific about what codes apply. But I don't, uh, necessarily want to state the, you know, just some of, but not all of the requirements of the common code. So we could say the Arkansas, um, plumbing code. Cause that's, that's where the, uh, the, the state inspector was, that's what he was referring to.
Okay. Would work. Okay. In the second paragraph that, uh, he made his notes, it says drains for in-ground pools. I think that should be drains for swimming pools, because it doesn't talk about above-ground pools. So it's drains for swimming pools must be connected.
Yeah.
Cause if I have a five thousand gallon above-ground pool, it doesn't tell me anything about how I can drain that water.
Yeah. I don't.
That typically ends up blowing across people's yard. But we say it can't do that anymore. In this ordinance, it says it shall be connected to the.
The, the in-ground pools, because the in-ground pools typically either have a drain in the bottom of them. That, that has to connect to something.
Goes to the pump, then you turn the diverting valve to exhaust instead of recirculate. All pools work the same way.
Yeah.
There's a diversion valve and it says you're gonna exit to waste or you're gonna recirculate for filter or just recirculate period.
I was gonna comment, I think maybe it was last fall, one day I saw a water curtain hanging out in the ground up by the island fire station. And I called the district office and they said, oh, they were draining the pool. And it was coming up out of the ground in the ditch out there.
They must have an underground hot pipe to some point and then it was coming percolating to the surface. It must not be connected to the sewer.
Well, I'd take it if, at that point, it wasn't. There, it was, you know, around the bottom.
I asked Dan Frater and he didn't say it had, he looked up to the sewer. He said it could be. And I, I said that it should be because, um, if I live uphill from Lindumis. And I decide to drain my swimming pool and I pump, you know, five thousand gallons of water through your backyard, you're probably not gonna like it.
Right. And the same.
It adds up, ends up in your basement.
That's the same concern that I had if I opened the valve and pumped it into the city sewer system. That is the waste treatment, I'm gonna handle my water flow.
Frank, Dan, you didn't think that would be a problem.
Okay.
Does it matter what kind of pool it was?
Well, that was the point. Some of it's salt water and some of it's chlorine.
No, in, in grounds usually have more water than a.
They're typically larger.
Some of them are salt water. You know, some of those above-ground pools are pretty big. I mean, it depends on what you're doing. You, you know, those are as big as a new gallon.
Well, I don't think you'd want, uh, five thousand gallons of salt water being pumped out into your neighbor's yard either.
No.
So, but what's the chances of somebody, you're having saltwater?
I think there's a couple in, over on the.
It's one out of three is the chances. That's, there are a lot of third pools running out of salt.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're a lot easier to take care of.
And they're easier on the person's, the body. It's easier on the body.
These women are pouring.
Biggest problems gonna be, well, they're, well, they're lift, if they've got a lift station, is the lift station gonna be able to handle twenty thousand gallons of water coming in at one time? Because, you know, they, the, the input on those, the, the exhaust on those is what, two and a half, three inches, something like that?
You talk to homeowners?
Out of the pools.
The homeowner's pump or the?
No, that's a pool. The water coming out of the pool is a, is a two or three inch line.
Yeah. Mine was two inch.
Yeah. So you're, you're forcing two inch wa, two inches of, of, of solid water coming into those tanks.
At twenty PSI.
Yeah. And, and you're trying to pump it uphill at ten PSI, just enough to get over the hill. I think it's gonna, it, it would easily overrun their, their tank.
Well, it may overrun.
Ten times the capacity of those tanks.
It may overrun the sewer line and then backs up into the neighbor's house.
Right.
Hey, no swimming pools.
Dan, Dan should be able to answer that. Very knowledgeable.
Hey, I, I asked him and he said he didn't think that'd be a problem. So maybe he didn't think it through enough. I don't know.
Well, if you drain the saltwater pool into the sewers, I mean, I don't think it would do really well.
It's gonna throw the balance off for sure.
We're working on an ordinance that's gonna affect a part of Holiday Island that we don't, that is, is HISA's. Not ours.
That's why I asked Dan. Do you wanna put something in the ordinance that, that, um, wasn't compatible with. What the water department supervisor said would work.
So my question would be, how many pools would be out here in Holiday Island and how are they currently being run?
And is it initial?
Is it owns too?
Typically don't drain them, but usually.
They don't?
They may, they may drain them down a little bit, but they don't empty them.
Okay.
They shock them and spray them.
It's dangerous to drain the in-ground pool anyway, cause it'll collapse. Cause then they have the pressure of water pushing on the sides.
Or, or they become an above-ground pool.
Yeah.
When the water cable comes up.
That seems pretty elaborate, above-ground pools. That one right up here, I'm all the way up there, just draining it down to the side.
I'm taking.
I'm not ready to talk about that tonight. They don't understand, mind you, that.
So it has to be the ground.
Some of the ground quality.
Ah, it is, it's a electrical term for grounding.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
By the way, if you guys got any questions, my email is on the website. Please ask, even if it's incendiary or angry, I take them all.
Any requests for me? Email me.
Eric, what do you do with the compliments?
Oh, I take all of those.
I don't get those. Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add, uh, drains for in-ground and above-ground pools must be connected to the HISA sewer system. And words from all that, of all Arkansas plumbing codes and regulations. And, uh, I will ask Dan one more time, you know. Can the lift stations handle it? And, um, what if it's salt water?
So did the previous planning commission, the people apply or if they, you apply, did they consider some of these things?
They didn't have a building inspector or anything, so they just.
I don't think they best would do that.
I mean, what's that gonna require a pool owner to, to, you know, even drain at the bottom of the pool?
No, I think like Linda, the drain to the bottom of the pool just goes to the filter.
Goes to the three-way valve on the bomb. And then there's a port on there to exhaust it however you're going.
I, I had to move it.
And you had an exhaust port, right? A waste port. And you opened it up and it went through a tube to the curb probably. Yeah. So it went down to the, the, not the sanitary sewer, but it went down the stormwater system. And that's how, that's how we did it in the city I moved from. It went to the stormwater, not to the sewer.
And that's probably totally illegal now with moving stormwater.
It may be.
Off regulations.
It might be.
Yeah.
But that's how they handle it.
I think mine, I had an in-ground pool.
I addressed something else.
I think it went into the center. I know it didn't go out into the backyard.
Or the street.
Because all of this city county is as flat as this room here. So if you pump water out into the yard. You know, it was instant flood.
Jury. Jury has.
Eric?
Yeah. Were you entertaining other comments?
Sure.
It's. I had to scroll back up the clues. Where, where is the, uh, permitting process? What page is that?
The, uh, table of fees?
Yeah.
It's on page, uh.
Page eight.
Page nine.
Okay. The, the question is, uh. Yeah. I'm not trying to stir up any issues, but I guess I am. Is that, I, I've heard that. We have allowed HISA to hire its own building inspector for the, uh, rec center.
Is that weird? Can we talk about that separate from the ordinance?
Well, I, that's my question. Does the ordinance allow that? I don't see anything where it gives the building inspector or the mayor, uh, the privilege of, of, of. Not enforcing our building code on any project.
Well, that, I did, I did do that. I allowed them to hire their own licensed engineer to do the inspection. Because, uh. Because it, it was, it was, it was a big problem. We couldn't get along.
Don't we have problems with homeowners on their projects?
Not really, not like that. It was an untenable situation in my, in my opinion, to continue to try to work with them. Well, maybe I exceeded my authority, but.
No offense, I think you did.
I did full, well.
Cows are out of the barn now, but. If there's any, it's controversial that project has been, we should, we should have done that by the letter of our code. That's just my opinion.
All right, any other comments on the. On the ordinance itself?
Uh, in, on what page thirteen, I was talking about. Several building electrical inspectors is, I heard, I heard verbiage that. Is that, is that David?
Who is that?
On section eleven dot four dot three, inspection electrical, inserted building electrical inspector.
It's, it's all through that.
Page thirteen or page twelve, probably.
Yeah, who is it?
Is that, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I did that for clarification, I put the electrical inspection inspector.
From our building inspector?
Yes, because our building inspector is not a licensed.
Electrical inspector, that was my question, we, we talked about a different person.
We are using either the state inspector or we've had the very good building inspector help us out.
Well, I read down another. That page I found it was. Since the city about these easiest.
Are, are there other instances where we're having to do that, Dan?
No.
I don't think there are any more questions.
All right, if there aren't any other changes to the ordinance. Then I guess we can call for a roll call vote on the ordinance as marked up. Okay, council member Dumas?
Aye.
Council member Elwood?
Aye.
Council member Graves?
Aye.
Council member Coon?
Aye.
Council member Mills?
Aye.
Council member Pittman?
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor, one opposed. Okay, the ordinance passes. I'll get these corrections made and we'll post the updated building code on the website. All right, next on the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, there was declaring an emergency as.
Emergency clause, that's right. Since there was an emergency clause on the ordinance, we'll entertain a motion to approve the emergency clause. Make a motion to approve the emergency clause. Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda made a second, is any discussion?
Do we have pending issues? Do we have, I'm aware of one pool being built.
There's one pool being built and there's a, on that same job, there's a solar installation where they want, the, the owner wants the final sign-off so that. So that they can turn it on.
Um, what about existing pools? Are they grandfathered without having to follow this? And I'm thinking specifically HISA pools, are they up to the drain?
I do not know, and I think in all ordinances, you know, you can enforce something that was in existence before the ordinance.
Okay.
Which generally, at least what we've been following by. And any other discussion? Roll call vote. Council member Dumas?
Aye.
Council member Elwood?
Aye.
Council member Graves?
Aye.
Council member Coon?
Aye.
Council member Mills?
Aye.
Council member Pittman?
Aye.
Five in favor, one opposed, Mr. Mayor. Okay, emergency clause passes. Next on the agenda is short-term rentals. Hopefully, what everybody has in front of them is a version that I modified today. After talking with Bella Vista, well, first of all, the, the. Draft ordinance, and, and we're not gonna vote on this ordinance tonight, so this is just for discussion. But I started out basically using the Bella Vista short-term rental ordinance. And it even, knowing that it was being challenged in court. And because I thought it was a pretty good ordinance and I was hoping that they would appeal it and that they would win on appeal. However, I did talk to Bella Vista mayor this morning or this afternoon. And they do not plan on challenging it. What they did was they drafted, there was actually an injunction, I think, issued prohibiting them from enforcing that. Their original ordinance from twenty twenty-two. But the judge didn't give any reason for declaring the ordinance unconstitutional. He or she just said it's unconstitutional and as of this ruling, you can't enforce it. So what the city did was they repealed that ordinance. And then they passed a new ordinance, taking out all of the things that the thirteen property owners. Were raising as an issue in their lawsuit. Thinking that that should satisfy everybody and they passed that ordinance. And now one of those thirteen property owners has filed another lawsuit saying that they are. In contempt of the judge's order. And, but he's pretty confident that they're gonna win that, that suit. So what I did was I pretty much updated our draft ordinance to reflect their latest version of the ordinance. The, the one, the one issue, or the one thing that, that I think was a little different between us and, and Bella Vista. Well, first of all, they took out all the verbiage on inspections, they took out the verbiage on insurance requirements and. What was the third one?
It's like impact on timeshares.
Well, there was, there was, that wasn't the main one, though, there was street.
After fixing those inspections.
Oh, the. Oh, they took out where it said that it shall not be rented exclusively as an event menu, basically. And we talked about the timeshares because they, they seem to be giving the timeshares a pass on short-term rentals. If a timeshare owner doesn't wanna use his week, they have a situation very similar to us, they have one timeshare organization. The timeshare has had some financial issues over, over the years. He felt that they were doing a little better now and, and they, they didn't wanna harm the timeshares. So they just kind of let them off the hook as far as any kind of regulation on short-term rentals. And of course, I mean, I, you know, I didn't, didn't argue with them that that was a good idea or a bad idea. But I question whether it is a good idea because as more and more people abandon their week, you know. Quit paying their, their maintenance fees and stuff like that and basically turn their week back over to Table Rock Landing. More and more of those timeshare weeks are going to become short-term rental weeks. Right now, Table Rock Landing uses a considerable percentage of that property for short-term rentals as opposed to actual timeshares. That's correct, that's, right now, it's kind of, it's how saving the timeshare is the rental income. So, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna harm them, but I don't think that it would be right to allow them to. To not, not, you know, conform to the same rules that all of the other short-term rental people have followed. So I, I did kind of put that back in again where I said a short-term rental. Now, I, I put in unless those timeshare units are being rented on a short-term basis to non-timeshare property owners. That may not be the correct language, but.
The version we have is that's crossed out.
Um, then you didn't find my latest version.
This is off the.
Yeah, I, I was working on this, at least until noon today yet.
Okay.
There should be a line in there.
The one I posted on meeting docs was the one that came in late this afternoon. Remember the one that was.
You're reading from one-on-one. Yeah, his, his looks different than ours.
What, what page are we on?
We're in the top of page, well, it's section one-on-one, it's the first page, first paragraph. So in blue.
It's in black on yours, I think.
Well, I, I just got red, I've crossed out.
Okay, yeah, I put it back in after talking with. They, you know, at, at this point here, I was basically mimicking what, what Bella Vista did, they took it all together. And I put the, I put a little bit of it back in.
Okay.
Three definitions.
Yeah, one-on-one.
But I'm suggesting we leave in the comment or the statement that says unless those timeshare units are being rented. On a short-term basis to non-timeshare property owners.
Okay.
Okay.
And I can't.
Now, with that said, it's probably not an easy thing and it's gonna, it's gonna require some. Some discussion probably with the timeshare people. Because we have a lot of, a lot of unsold weeks that are gonna be used for short-term rental. Does each one of those weeks require a, a short-term rental permit? Or does Table Rock Landing just get one permit? Or does, if I have, if I own a week and I wanna rent my week out every year instead of using it? Does that make me a short-term rental property owner where I need to have a permit? I think it's a.
It's more involved, yeah.
It is definitely a complicated issue.
Well, Wes, aren't there some that they sold to individuals?
Oh, yeah.
There are two that have been holding on, you know, year-round.
Yeah.
And I think right in, in one, maybe both cases, people originally lived there. Now, what's their residence, but I don't think that's the case anymore.
If that person you're looking for, condo, we looked at one there.
Okay.
Shields.
But, so now they, they may be rentals, I mean, those owners may be renting those, I don't know if it's long-term or short-term or what. What their arrangement is.
But they wouldn't be renting them out through the timeshare people?
Pardon?
I said, I would guess they would not be renting them out through the timeshare.
I'm not sure, Kelly may be handling that. If they're renting them short-term, if they're renting them short-term, Table Rock Landing may be handling that.
They might have made a private arrangement with them, I suppose.
Yeah.
If they, the two that are owned by individuals, you know, do they still pay some sort of maintenance fee to Table Rock Landing?
They have a separate arrangement where it's figured out their portion of the cost.
Are they paying an assessment for the lot? To the HISA?
Or I'm, I'm not following you.
This property has been separated from the Table Rock Landing organization, are they now paying an assessment for that property? To HISA?
Probably not.
I bet.
Probably should.
I bet.
Yes, I think they would, and I'm not sure if that's all handled by Table Rock Landing or if they did that independently.
Okay.
But I know they do pay a monthly assessment to Table Rock Landing based on. Costs applicable to them.
Sure.
Anyway, that, that section, I think it was gonna take some, some further investigation.
Dan and I were talking about that today, if, and I'm not saying that Table Rock Landing shouldn't have a permit or something. But if they do then, as he said, how is that gonna be figured? Because, you know, Stan said, a portion, a portion of the weeks during the year is used by the owners. And sometimes, like in our case right now, we used to use them as honor, now we rent them because we're not. We don't need to come here on vacation here anymore.
Are they with an insumption where you can trade weeks for another timeshare somewhere?
Yeah, and so you see, in essence, when an exchange comes in, which there are, you know, that happens regularly. When an exchange comes in, is that equivalent to being used by the owner then? Because that owner is just traded.
Well, I think if they're trading weeks, then it's still, it's not being, it's not being handled as a short-term rental. It is still being treated as a timeshare. And, you know, those kinds of transactions, you don't pay sales tax on and all that kind of stuff. However, if, if I own a timeshare and I rent it out for a week, I should pay sales tax on it. And if we have an AMP tax, I should pay the AMP tax on it.
I agree.
So that's, that's why I don't think that they should be given a pass on it. You know, especially if there's, you know, hundreds of weeks a year that are rented out, that's a short-term rental.
Which there are.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they do collect sales tax now, presently. Because there's, of course, Arkansas and the county sales tax and also I think there's a two percent Arkansas tourism tax that people have to pay.
But, but you said that sometimes they, they, Table Rock Landing does the booking for the individual. Timeshare owner and sometimes they say, well, just call, you know, so-and-so, you know, and, and pay him directly and then, you know.
Or it's the same as if I would rent it to that person.
Rent a week out.
Then, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't I have a permit? Or, or should there just be a permit for. Or, or should there just be a permit per con, per condo for the year? You know, so should there be a permit, or 28 permit fees? Or, I don't know. Should Table Rock Landing pay one per, have one permit? I don't know that that would be right.
One of our, one of the requirements to get a permit is to be able to demonstrate that you can collect the sales and A and P tax. So, um, you know, sometimes they go through the property owner and sometimes they go through Table Rock Landing, that's not a very solid process.
I don't think that, I think that's just a special situation.
Yeah. You know, if Table Rock Landing always does the booking, then I suppose there'd be some opportunity to, to, um, give them a, a package deal. However, um, you know, if, you know, you know, just turning back the clock a little bit, when Ozark Mountain Rental Properties or whatever, Damon Anke's business, you know, when he was managing and owned several rental properties himself here, wouldn't he be entitled to the same package deal then as the timeshares? So...
When he sold his business to Vacasa.
I think.
Which is a corporate, corporation that's bigger than Eureka Springs, but they have a, a place of business.
When, when this transition to the new people that bought out Tom's interest comes about, I think they will be handling all of the booking for the rentals. That's part of the agreement there. That part's not in place yet, but that's what's supposed to be happening.
Well, we, obviously, we need to do a little more investigation on that, on that part of the ordinance.
Also, I'd like to bring up the fact that, um, right, Bill, those require inspections. And I think some of the other towns and cities in Arkansas, like Mountain Home, Hot Springs.
And Eureka Springs was getting ready to, and that's why I kind of wish that Bella Vista would challenge this.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's...
Well, and there's no reason, I mean, we don't have to follow Bella Vista, is what I'm saying.
I just don't want to end up in one of those.
So we take it out. So we take it out.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I, I would say they're gonna sue Hot Springs before they sue us.
Sue the little bits of... It's the property owners that are...
Pinky people on the different... But I, I, I'm for leaving it in, um, and, and all these other cities tied into their business licensing because they say it's a business, and all businesses must have some kind of an inspection.
I just...
For the public welfare.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't disagree. It's just that it seems like there are court rulings that are in conflict with, you know, some of that. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm reading something into a, a, this judge's decision that the judge himself wasn't willing to put in to their ruling. But, um, the only basis I could see of declaring it unconstitutional is because the Supreme Court ruled at one time that you can't treat VRBOs any differently than any other property owner. They're all property owners, it's still residential, you can't treat them any different. You're not requiring Joe Blow, you know, on, on, at the first, first house on the block to have, uh, safety inspections, so you can't, you can't require the VRBO.
We don't require homeowners to pay A and P taxes, but every city and town that has, in Arkansas, that has VRBOs asks them to pay A and P taxes.
As well as sales tax.
As well as sales tax. So they are, you know, there are some reasons why a business should have inspections because the public utilizes those services and, uh, you know, it's not just the people that live there that are at risk. It's, it's the general public or the people that visit our location and facility.
And in that same topic, I have a concern that we don't continue the inspections. Uh, one time only is sufficient? I think it needs to be, you know, on a more frequent basis, especially if there's a safety complaint made against the property. Now, someone says, the fire detectors aren't working in the apartment I rented, or worse. I plugged in the microwave and it went sparking, you know?
And, and all businesses get inspected for ingress and egress.
Ingress, egress.
Is that how you say that?
Ingress, egress.
Ingress. So there's pathways in and out to, for, for fire safety. And we're not gonna inspect the short-term rentals. I mean, people's lives are at stake.
One thing that we need to check out is that, that ruling, state law says that a ruling made in district court applies to that district government. Bella Vista is in District 19W for West. Eureka is in 19, uh, East, 19E. So is that the same district?
No, it's separate, it's a court.
That's what I thought.
Was this a different order?
That, that wholly precedent.
I don't know.
Any, any district court here is going to look at bordering district courts. It's not law, but they're gonna look at it, and it's, it's not uncommon for them to follow it. But we don't have to, and that's gone to a appellate court, it's not law.
If it's a civil lawsuit, I would guess it's a circuit. Yeah.
They don't make law. I'm an accident, too.
I, I have no problem with putting it back in. I just, I was just kind of following Bella Vista's lead that they were trying to avoid any more lawsuits.
Would you, in section 107 maximum number of actors, first sentence, first sentence? Says, should not exceed 600, and then it goes down to the next one paragraph, and it says...
What, what page are you on?
On 107, page 11.
107.
Section 107.
I have the same question.
First sentence is 600?
Mm-hmm.
And then? In point two, it's 150.
Because it was 600 in Bella Vista.
Right.
So maximum is 150?
150, and that, that's just a number I pulled out of the air because I, I figured that's about 10%.
Well, I just...
That's about 10% of the houses in Holiday Island.
Okay.
The, Bella Vista currently has 305 actual permitted VRBOs.
Well, what is, what is the 600 referring to, Bill?
There's an actual number of permits that they'll allow.
But then they said they only allow 150.
And the second table, that should be 150. It's just changing to 150.
Oh, 600 should be 150. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 600 should be 150.
I get it. Thanks.
Okay.
Now, a question that I have. Now, and this again goes back to proteins to the timeshares. And I'm not saying there should be permits or anything, but the reason is, the reason we're talking about these regulations for permits is because these are in residential areas. And if it is, what's the zoning on Table Rock Landing? Is that also residential land, or is that...
I don't know if any.
It's, it should be like a motel or hotel.
Do you know what unit block and lot they're in?
No, I haven't.
Well, they're operating like a motel.
Right.
Well, one of the, actually, a timeshare doesn't fit, fit a short-term rental definition because the short-term rental definition is that it's primarily, it's a, the principal use of the property remains a whole plant, remains a resident.
What was that, Linda?
Definitely, definitely, that's different, excuse me. It's a residential dwelling and a timeshare is not residential.
Mm-hmm.
So two buildings off, and most are residences, more or less, so they're kind of mixed.
I'm not sure that what they're zoned at is the important criteria. It's how are they operating? Are they operating as a timeshare or are they operating as a short-term rental?
Or are you going to motel?
Yeah.
Or are they a motel?
I think they're all above, it sounds like.
It sounds like they've got a bit of everything in there, yeah. Some hotels, some timeshare, some...
Residents.
Residents.
And you don't know from one week to the next what it's gonna be?
Is there a name?
Dan just got some... Can't throw that out.
We don't have one anymore.
Can't answer your question on its own right now.
Okay.
The concern that I have is that, apparently, we're treating this as commercial enterprises because we're going to insist that they collect an A and P tax, but they are in residential areas, and I believe we have that requiring a commercial, or excuse me, a conditional use permit. So I think in, when we talk about the word permit, they should say conditional use permit so it's clear what this permit is. Because you say that it's gonna be issued by the city upon a planning permission.
I, that's because I wanted somebody to do it. I didn't want to have to do it.
But it needs to be a conditional use permit. That's what we're asking for.
Would that require, that would require a public hearing?
Absolutely.
I don't think it should be issued by the planning permission.
I, I just put that in there. I now saw that's...
The way Tom D set it set up, I think for the district, they're designated as timeshares, not residential.
Yeah, he, there was, there was a special code for it, he has.
Well, we are going after the A and P tax, right?
I think for you, too.
And that would also...
But that requires a lot more study, too.
Yeah.
As to what you can even use that.
Well, it would require a separate ordinance or something.
It's, it says what you're supposed to use it for, how you, how you get it, the maximum amount, in 602, in 603. Talks about the collection of the tax, what codes apply, the living of it.
Does the A and P tax require a, a ballot, you know, a vote of the...
No, I don't think I saw that it does, no.
Because there's two kinds of, there's two kinds of taxes. There's one that I think is called the lodging tax. And if you're a city of the first class with a population less than 5,000, you can have a 2% lodging tax to go towards parks and things like that. And then there's an A and P tax that goes towards advertising and promotion. That's a separate tax, but I was thinking that the A and P tax required a vote.
A and P tax, second-class cities, by ordinance of the governing body, may levy a tax not exceed 3% on the gross receipts proceeds identified in section C below. So we do it by vote of the council.
Is that, is that, that A and P tax?
Advertising promotion app.
Or municipal sales tax?
You can impose both of those, the lodging tax and A and P?
Well, that one is...
I think you want to do both of that.
I haven't seen lodging tax.
I think lodging...
I, I got it.
Lodging tax is more leeway, right?
The disposition of the A and P. Read it someplace, but it's for, it's for parks and advertising.
We could build parks.
Very well. It's right here.
Seriously, we could do a dog park.
We're gonna need a dog park.
I'll veto any ordinance for a dog park.
Might get overridden.
It might be, it'd be my first veto.
It might get overridden.
Yeah, yeah, your first override.
Everybody that overrides the veto will have to take their turn managing the dog park because I am not gonna do it.
Oh, volunteer, we hired a part-time guy.
Anyway, I think we need a work session on this.
The biggest problem we have at an A and P is the requirement for a board of seven people. Four of them have to be owners and managers of a business in the business, and three of them have to be other managers of the businesses. It's the seven people having business in hotel management to be on your board in order to collect an A and P. That'll be, that'll be a bigger hurdle than anything else.
What about the business?
In this city.
In the city, you have to have...
We have to have an A and P commission.
Okay.
And it has to be seven people in the business of tourism.
I think in Eureka, they had that question.
Well, they have the problem in Eureka of having two missing board members. They have a board, but they don't have seven on it.
Well, it wasn't, didn't they say maybe that the business had to be in Eureka, but the person didn't have to live in Eureka?
Yeah, they, they've changed that recently. You don't have to be a resident to be on the commission.
And I think hands, Wes, are that idea to be a work session.
Yeah. Can, can I agree to the record of letter I got from the lady? This was at our previous work session that, uh, wanted to provide input on the short-term. She lived, she's in Lundy's, and she said she couldn't come tonight, but she sent me an email. Can I read that?
Sure.
If I can pull it up here.
I've got a half a dozen changes on every page, so I don't want much detail. We'll be going to it tonight.
Well, yeah, we need a work session on this one. It's the obvious.
I definitely think we need to go forward with it. And I did see something on, because I think that's one of our crash reports. And there was something in there about the strike, right?
Yes, it says they have to have a plan, and I had a suggestion we change that to compliance with the city's solid waste ordinance, rather than just a plan.
When we first talked about it, we said they were gonna, you know, come up with a group dumpster that they could use, but that, that's not happening, so we didn't do it. Well, I haven't seen any dumpsters sit around. I don't know what it is.
There's one up by, behind Dollar General, and somebody just told me yesterday that, um...
There's one up the end there.
See, the other one, that there was, that they rented a VRBO for one of their relatives, and there was a dumpster on that property.
It, it's off-topic, but that overhead area that's next to the new city office could be gated on three sides and put three counts in there. We keep our stray dogs right there. Right next to the city office.
You're gonna take care of them, right?
No, sir.
It's getting pushed to a motion.
Yeah, I think...
And she was referring to the first ordinance she sent, not the last one. She says, "In Bella Vista, a reminder, there is a restraining order against this exact ordinance as well. Restraining order clearly states that the rules proposed are unconstitutional, order the city not to enforce it. The case is going to cost the taxpayers of Bella Vista a ton of money if won, and they expect to win, and they will fight with the city. The city will have to pay a short-term rental..."